All right, it's seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting in order. The regular meeting in the Mount Holly Planning Commission for Wednesday, December twenty, twenty twenty-three. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, there you go. The agenda is approved. Um, we have two sets of minutes available or that have been distributed. November twenty-nine and the November fifteen regular meeting. Okay, has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yep.
Yeah.
We just need.
Oh, we do need to change.
Change the um, November twenty-nine minutes to have say, well, they say December sixth currently, they need to say November twenty-nine. Um, and that's all I saw, so I'll uh make a motion to approve the minutes pending the correction from December sixth to November twenty-nine.
Second.
Yep.
Jim seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Any opposed? You're there.
I wasn't there, so I don't know, can you?
You know this, great. Let's see, where are we? Uh, reports, please.
Okay, um, I have received a BCR unusually for the winter. Um, Toffery on uh Champite Road for a forty-eight foot by thirty-four foot garage. With uh, it's a new construction, but um, no water or wastewater involved.
What was the name?
Toff- Toffery, T-O-F-F-E-R-I. Um, and the other thing to alert you to is that um, the first and only flood hazard area permit application has been, it's been clarified that it's exempt from permitting by Kyle Medash. Um, uh, he, Kyle has not yet responded to me on all the other flood hazard area. Um, questions that I've posed to him, even though he said he would, so I'll follow up with him.
Tough year for a flood guy.
Yes, yes.
So just a clarification on that one. So does that mean that you issued a permit? Or how does that work every year?
Uh, it, it, it means that I sign off on the form saying that it's exempted. Uh, I, I'm, I have to admit that I'm not completely sure whether that constitutes issuing a permit. But I need to communicate this to Andy and also just clarify, Andy Bilalock, and just clarify that he still owes us thirty dollars. Because there was a question about how the uh fees were applied.
Yeah, their application fees.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that would be interesting. I'd have to look back at the text. It's been a while, almost six months. It hasn't been that long.
I imagine.
So if, I, I think I remember that in the cases of an exempt project application, you'd still issue a permit saying that.
Yes, I mean, I.
Cause you're permitting the development.
That it is exempt, yes, yeah.
So, and I think, you know, I think we did not, as part of the bylaw, um, specify how the permit would be structured, so I think that is entirely up to you. At least that's my opinion. We didn't put it in the bylaws itself.
Is it this section?
Yeah, it's, it would, yes, it was determined to be exempt and it's because it's considered a agricultural access at the moment. That is the status.
So the first sentence says you don't have to do a permit.
Yeah, so my understanding is that I signed the um, application.
Of the construction registration.
To the application.
No, no, the application itself, saying it is exempt.
Okay.
And send a copy to the applicant.
So you don't have to issue a permit technically, right?
File that.
In your file. I think we put it like, the text was like, in your files.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Once I have a little file cabinet.
I, I, I missed uh the reason why it's exempt. Can you just uh repeat that?
Uh, well, the, the, uh, last year, um, the, I forget the name of the person, but the there was already a Ford across the, the, the brook there and it was given an agricultural access. Um, and basically Kyle Medash and, as I say, the, the other person who, who clarified that uh confirmed that, given the current objectives, it was exempt. That because it was not any larger construction, although there is a question about review or coming and having a look at the, at the structure itself, but I can, I asked for clarification as to whether that meant that they weren't going to review its exception and got no response, so by default it's exempt.
I mean, you could probably find another reason, like in the recreation or, I mean, there's a couple of paths.
Yeah, there were, there were, there are various.
Like we, we talked, I mean, there was somebody in the hearing, um, Bill, who asked specifically about that and we, we clarified that those sort of things would probably be exempt, and I think this is probably one of those as well, so could, could fall into that. Yeah, Kyle's the expert, obviously. Okay, great. So that's, that's kind of cool that you're starting a, setting precedents with how you handle it. All right, anything else?
Uh, no, nothing from my side.
Uh, I just had a couple of quick things with town plan statuses later in the agenda, so I'll leave that off. Um, I passed around, I think everyone had a chance to review it. I don't think Andy has seen it yet. I'll send this to you immediately following the meeting. Sorry, I, I thought of it last minute. Um, I got wind very recently of a, I believe it was DEC. Yep, Department of Environmental Conservation, the Clean Water People. There is, um, and I haven't really reviewed it yet, honestly. There's some sort of master planning for stormwater systems grant available or funding available, um, with, it just came out, you know, this past week. Proposals are due at the end of January. So, you know, we've been pretty busy with work, but um, something that we can think about, I think, for maybe um, for January, I would imagine. I don't know how, hmm, actually, the timing is kind of tough. When is our meeting in January?
Uh, it would be.
But I don't have a calendar over there yet.
It would be on the eighteenth, uh, seventeenth of January.
Oh, boy. So would we do like, like a couple of days later. Well, I don't, I think we would have to talk to Jeff, and that's really, this is like probably the worst time of year to try to get time with Jeff, but what, what do you all think about this idea of, of stormwater grant? I mean, we do, we, we desperately need a stormwater system, but I gotta be honest with you, our workload has been.
Right now, they're clearing the ride balls and stormwater system.
What's that?
Right now, they're clearing the ride balls and stormwater system.
Did that happen this week up there?
Yeah, they almost lost Beaver Meadow Road again, and they were working hard to keep Sawyer Hill Road.
Oh, okay.
Yesterday, or not, before yesterday.
So for, yeah, for the road system.
Cause the town crew was up on Sawyer Hill Road with everything they had.
Brilliant.
Fighting it, and Keith was over on Beaver Meadow Road, and he, he just took his excavator and put a ditch right across the road. That's all he could do.
Right where they put the new.
Where, where they put that tent culvert in.
Oh, wow.
He had to put a ditch, about that deep right across the road. Otherwise, otherwise it was taking the road clear down to uh one, uh one fifty-five.
Yeah, that's, it's, cause that, it's, I, I looked at it just a couple, I don't get over there that as much as you do, obviously, but um, when I looked at it a couple of months ago after the storm, it's, it was, it's asking for trouble because it's, it's all, it's all scattered out now and it comes straight down the hill right at that culvert.
Well, and my road was underwater too.
Was it? Oh, boy. Well, I think, I think this one is more for like infrastructure systems like storm drain. I, I don't know. I haven't really reviewed it, but my, 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 um, my gut says that these stormwater systems typically are.
Catch basins and stuff like that.
And stuff like that, but.
I don't think they're, I know they're gonna have time this year to work on.
Right. I think this would be for, like, starting the engineering on it or something like that.
Like you said before, they don't say how, or Andrew said, how much we pay, how much they pay, you know, it's fifty, fifty.
Yeah, it's worth looking into though.
Yeah, well, I just, the timing is really tough for us, or for, you know, for, for me.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I got some stuff going on in January.
Yeah.
Big time. Um. It does sound pretty good, but.
Yeah, it's just answers to questions will be posted, right?
Well, it says proposals due in January, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a short time schedule.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, cause by the time we're done, you know, I'm not gonna work on it over Christmas and stuff, but.
And that, it seems to imply that you've got a plan in place or ready for something.
Does it?
Well, it, it, you know, hi, I want to do a catch basin on Beaver Meadow Road. Well, okay, where, how much? What you gonna put it, you know?
But actually.
Cause it's, it's sort of.
The development of stormwater.
Isn't this actually a request for proposals from firms who want to undertake the master planning?
Oh, it is?
The state.
Oh, maybe I'm completely misunderstanding.
Sorry.
This is uh, blah, 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 blah. The state may sign contract with one of more or more firms under the terms of this RFP. So I.
All right, forget it then.
I think this is actually.
So they already have a plan, they just need somebody to do that.
I, I, somebody sent it to me saying, should we apply for this? And I, I didn't even read it that carefully. I think you're right. I think it has nothing to do with what we want.
I completely misread it, you're right.
Yeah, I'd misread it too. Well, that would have been cool, although the worst timing, but well, let's keep our ears open. Yeah, this is terrible timing. We got a lot of stuff going on. We got, we got this, we got the Belmont thing, we got the town plan. All right, so, or scratch that, that, that actually sort of, that's kind of good in a way. All right. Um, good news is that um, we just got noticed that the state fully funded our municipal planning grant application. So that's to uh complete a housing study, has a needs assessment and action plan. So that's um, thirty thousand dollars. So that's pretty cool. That's uh, I think gonna be helpful. So hopefully we'll find somebody to do the work at this, at the price, cause that's been a problem in the last few years. The prices on those things have, just like houses themselves.
Only a little bit.
Well, I'll give you an example. I think it's all public data, so it's not secret. Just a couple of years ago, London Neri did a very nice study with, you know, some people say one of the top firms that do this sort of work, and it was hmm, twenty-two thousand, okay? I talked to that firm, hmm, probably October, November.
Two thousand for what?
The whole study.
Oh, oh, the cost study. I was gonna say, like, are you talking about average house cost?
No, to do, to perform the study. And I contacted that same firm and asked them, you know, what's it looking like now? And I thought maybe, you know, ten percent more, maybe twenty?
I bet you it's like fifty.
It was. Good guess. It was fifty thousand. Cool. Well, it's supply and demand.
Everything's doubled. Everything's doubled.
It's supply and demand. There's, there are only, everybody's doing this, has the same problems. It's, it's interesting. Okay, so that's that. I mean, that's good news on that. We'll see how that progresses. Um. Well, we'll talk about town plan separately. Um, the Belmont Village Center designation, okay? We should probably touch base on that one real quick. I don't have that separately. The select board did say they want to do it. They said they want to renew it. They had a resolution, I think, two months ago about that. They didn't say who they wanted to do it. I'm assuming that they don't want to do it, but I don't know that for sure. They probably want us to do it. The timing of that is interesting. Um, we will have to have a duly adopted town, new town plan, which uh means that not just the select board needs to approve the plan, but also the regional planning commission. I talked to the regional planning commission, well, emailed the planning commission folks today to see what their schedule looks like for the next couple of months, or whether they're backed up or what, so I'm gonna talk to them tomorrow on the phone. And try to see like, you know, kind of game it out, like what happens if we get an approval after the public hearing? Can they get it on the docket in the next month, or do they need two months, or whatever? So it's getting tight. Um, the other thing is, uh. So anyway, the way that works is once it goes to the regional planning commission, it goes through their committee, they discuss it, prove it, and then it gets sent into the, the whole body, they call the commissioners meeting, and then they have to adopt it. So I'm gonna get clarification on whether that means two months, or they can do it like the same day, or what? I, I don't, I don't actually know the answer to that, so. So then, once we have that, well, we don't necessarily have to wait for their approval to start on a plan, to the renewal. Um, but we will need to know what our final town plan looks like, cause we'll have to include snippets of it and so on. But I would suggest that we would probably start on that, maybe as soon as January, just to kind of go in parallel. You know, take, probably in January, take a look at what the existing plan looks like, look what the renewal process looks like, cause I actually don't know, so. Does that sound reasonable? And then we'll try to, as soon as the town plan is sort of ready, we'll try to jump on the application.
Me, John?
Yep.
If, let's assume worst case scenario on the regional takes like three months or whatever, yeah, I know. Would the current plan, I think so, has a year on it, doesn't it? So wouldn't that at least?
Oh, the current plan, our current town plan, I mean?
Yeah, the one, the, the one you, yeah, the one that's currently in effect.
Yeah, the current town plan is not about to expire.
Right, I thought it had at least a year left.
Yeah, at least a year. I don't remember.
So wouldn't that be sufficient to at least?
No, unfortunately. So the current town plan doesn't have the required elements for renewal of the village designation.
Ah, that I didn't realize.
Yeah, so when we got, the state sent us a specific email about that, saying it does not notice, they said like, you know, warning, your current town plan is not sufficient. Um, and that was confirmed by the regional planning commission. And then we did get the state to say, to give us the thumbs up on the proposed plan, assuming that is more or less intact. Um, that that would satisfy the requirements. Um, it comes down to a few things. I mean, most notably that our current town plan does not mention the village designation at all. And they, they, they don't allow that. You have to say not only that it exists, but that you shall renew it. They, that's important for them, that it shall be renewed, and also you um, show where it is and put it on the map, it must be on the map. It's not, it's not any of those things, so. Yeah, that's, that's sort of what's been driving, you know, for the most part, our urgency for like the last six months and and I think we did a pretty outstanding job. Everybody did a great job getting it to this point. We just have to kind of throw it over the last hurdle and. Yeah, like I said, I'm kind of making a bunch of assumptions about how hard this renewal was gonna be.
Well, yeah.
You know, I hope it's not like it sounds, you know, I hope it's, you know, I'm sort of in my head thinking it's like a month work, maybe, you know?
Don't hold your breath.
No, but I don't know, yeah.
No, I'm just looking at it like if regional doesn't feel there's a rush, they, timing's off. You know, oh, it's gotta go to committee, and the committee doesn't meet for another two weeks, three weeks, and then it's another month before the, you know, the whole board meets. You're, you know, it's like boom, boom, it's.
We're gonna be down the wire for sure.
So.
That's why I want to talk to them tomorrow and see what they're.
You might ask them if there's an alternative. I, I mean, now it's, I don't think this would work at all, but I'm so, but do a one-page addendum to the old plan that says, we, here's the map, we approve habit, we're gonna renew it, and we have a new plan coming out. In the meantime, approve this thing.
Well.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just.
Something that we considered, I think, when we started the town plan revision, whether we would kind of do um.
Right, but now you're up to pedal, you're like.
Well, then we get into the next, the next hurdle with the current town plan, is that the current, the current town plan in fact.
And it's missing pair, missing sections, I know.
Yeah, so it, it won't pass. They've added so many new rules too, since then.
Okay.
Yeah, it got, that's where we got into like, okay, we're just gonna do it.
Right, it's your. If they don't feel.
Trust me, if we could have got it done easier, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Cause it was, it's pretty grueling.
Twenty-two BCD renewal application checklist, renewal process for village center designation. A village center is designated for eight years. After the initial eight years, the municipality must submit a renewal application demonstrating that it continues to meet requirements for the designation. So here's the, do you want the whole thing, or do you just want the application guidelines? Okay, I'll just read all of it. Timeline and process. The Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, sends out a renewal reminder memo to each municipality six months prior to their renewal day. The application must, or the applicant must submit and renew application prior to their renewal day. Renewal applications are due by the first Monday of the renewal month. And the downtown board will meet and review applications on the fourth Monday of each month. Municipalities must submit one electronic copy, PDF or Word format, of the application and all supporting documents. If the file is too large to email, applicants may be submitted, applications may be submitted on a CD, thumb drive, or uploaded to a file sharing service such as Dropbox. Municipalities are not required to attend the downtown board meeting for renewal applications. Municipality's renewal schedule can be found on Vermont Municipal Planning Data Center. Late submissions. If the renewal date is missed, the designation continues for an additional six months with the program benefits suspended. If no renewal application is received after the six-month suspension, the downtown board will withdraw designation. Once designation is withdrawn, a community may submit a new application for the village center designation at any time. Amendments to the designated village center boundary. Requests to amend a boundary must be submitted by the first Monday of any month the board meets. Requests for amendments are reviewed using the same procedures as for new applications. Please contact DHCD to discuss village center designation renewal or boundary adjustments. Um, gives contact information and stuff. Um, applications are due the first Monday of the month by four thirty PM. So application guidelines. We need one, cover letter including name of the municipality, brief narrative that includes a list of previous and current revitalization activities in the village, municipal infrastructure. Or next bullet point's municipal infrastructure. Does the municipality have a water system? Does the municipality have a wastewater system? If so, include the name of the system and brief description of the system or systems in the cover letter. Name, address, daytime phone number, and email address of the primary contact person for the application. Number two, um, authorization for town or village select board or trustees. Minutes for the publicly held meeting showing that the renewal application for the village center designation has been authorized by the town or village.
That's an interesting one. I wonder if what we have qualifies for that, or whether we have to have the.
Actual hearing for the.
Or actual application for them to see.
Well, if I, if I caught the one part there, that if we don't make the timeframe right now, we have, we still have six months to get into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, with, with all the benefits.
Suspended.
Suspended.
Yeah.
What benefits are we getting now?
The grant priority is the big one.
Okay. So.
So we lose that for six months.
Six months.
Either way, well, up to six months. It, as soon as the regional passes it, you can submit it. It could be a week.
Just somebody probably wants to call and verify. I mean, this is twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, so things change every year with the state run up.
Yeah.
Um.
But that, that kind of eases things a little bit.
It's not as quite as dire maybe, but it depends on what.
How they absorb it.
Yeah, what grants are, are in flight kind of situation. I, I don't really know what, you know, Jeff and those guys at Dover are planning.
I don't, I don't happen to know of any that are in the works right now.
You'd opt to go.
Always doing paving or stuff.
Yeah, anything in that village center could be grant funded.
Yeah. Well, well.
Aren't there, aren't there also, sorry, but aren't there also tax uh benefits to businesses within the designated center?
Yeah.
Currently, we don't have any business.
I don't know, and I.
Well, Belmont store, Mount Holly beer.
Mount Holly beer, Mount Holly cider.
Oh, beer insider, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
And the, well, the store.
That's true.
That's not in business. That's not in business right at the moment.
Well, it may be by the time, it may be back in business, so by the time this timeframe becomes relevant.
Well, they gotta think, quit taking the building apart then first.
Confirm, so then it's confirmed planning process. Letter from the municipality's regional planning commission, okay? And then number four is municipal plan integration, so we need to show evidence that the municipal plan explains how the designation furthers the goals of the municipal plan. And also need an approved municipal plan map that depicts the boundaries of the designated area.
Yep.
That's everything, um.
Okay, that maybe isn't too bad. That's for the renewal, and if you have, if the, your, sort of, well, designation lapses, then the application gets much more difficult, but let's try, let's try to do the renewal.
Well, I'd like to think we can handle it before it totally lapses.
Yep, all right, cool. Um, let's see. So I think we should be able to discuss particulars in January, probably, or maybe, maybe even February.
Particulars of the.
Application.
Application.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, well, I'm not prepared to get into it today. Um, does that sound good to everybody? We'll talk about it in January. We'll put that on the agenda, kind of.
February is where it goes.
Yeah, I know. It's sort of a, a little bit of a, anyone's guess as to what will happen after the, the, um, the next hearing for the town plan, so.
The select board set a date for that?
They have, this is sixteenth.
Of January?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six thirty.
Yeah, the school.
Oh, it is the school?
I think, I thought it was at, is it the school?
Oh, look at me.
I don't.
I hadn't heard.
I thought I wrote it was at the school.
I hadn't heard.
I don't remember.
All right, then I stand corrected.
Well, it, it might be. I just, I just haven't heard where it is.
You'll see when the newsletter comes out.
I thought they put something, was it Newsflash this week, the UCF?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I thought I'd read it.
Uh, well, it's, um, it's at the town office.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Is this, cause it was on Zoom, they, if it's at the school, usually they don't do the Zoom up there.
Yeah, okay.
We got all this stuff. Okay, so, um, let's move on to, I don't think we have much, do we have correspondence? We actually did. We got a question.
Well, there were two public inquiries about zoning.
Right.
To which I responded.
New development, potential new development on one oh three.
Yeah.
Three.
Mm-hmm.
There you go. Development or just a new house?
So it's commercial development potentially, possibly?
Described as commercial, but no other details. The other was related to um, rules regarding solar uh structures.
Oh, I don't think I saw that one. Was that TAO?
Uh, no, it was actually sent to Carol.
Oh, solar structures.
The implication was it was, you know, domestic structures.
Oh, okay, not industrial scale?
No.
Okay.
That was the implication.
Where is the proposed development on Route one oh three?
Um, next to Wright Construction. Um, next to Wright Construction. Well, I don't think we have any details about what it is. We just had the inquiry, um. I don't think I had anything else, any other emails today? No? I don't think so. All right, so, uh, annual report, this thing's due. They're so, they're so kind and put the deadline on January third, so, um. Andy, uh, put this together. I did so, a little bit of editing on it and I, I think it's pretty good. You all, I think by now had a chance to at least skim it.
Looks good to me.
We're in the right ballpark.
So is it annually brought to the select board, right?
No, it goes to the town book, the annual.
Annual report.
Okay, okay.
Uh, well, two things in the first paragraph, uh, you might want to include that besides the community vision survey was the village plan seemed to be a lot of the specifics that went into the town plan were in the village plan more so than in the survey. Cause the survey tended to speak in a, I'm gonna call it, you know, like it'd be nice to have walking paths and.
Yeah, but a lot of the specifics weren't derived from the village plan, were they?
No, the, the specifics, I think, were put into the village plan from the survey.
Yeah, well, the, we're, we're talking, we haven't done the village one, right?
Well, there's a village, the village plan.
For the designation or?
No, so that's a different one. So the village plan that was part of the twenty twenty-two, um, municipal planning grant. So there was two kind of components to that. One was a community survey, townwide survey. And then, um.
I, the way I looked at it, I thought that fed the village plan.
It certainly, it certainly informed it.
Yeah.
Um, but it informed the town plan directly as well. Like, so for example, uh, the village plan is, is obviously focused on the village and not, does not address anything townwide.
Mm-hmm.
But the community survey had a lot of stuff that was townwide, like need for childcare was like a really big one in there. Um, and that stuff found the town, informed the town plan directly. The, the fact that like emergency services was ranked as like one of the top things people were interested in and cared about, definitely informed, you know, we put quite a few, a bit of emphasis on emergency services and um, and so on. So that's kind of what that means.
Okay.
Gauging the interests of the community, like, you know, I, I would say, I don't have it in front of me, but you know, like emergency services, you know, uh, town services like highway and then things like rural character were like really high. And I think what we've tried to do is represent that or reflect that in the town plan.
All right. Yeah, I just was, remember reading the town plan, a lot of the specificity, if I can speak properly, uh, seemed to dovetail with the village plan. That's the only reason I was mentioning it. But.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to if they're both have input from the same study.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the way I'd put it, I think the way I'd put it is that the survey informed both the town plan and the village plan. But it wasn't the case that the village plan, uh, informed the town plan.
What's that?
And the village plan isn't really what we worked on, which is this is a discussion of what we have worked on, the planning missions worked on.
Right, okay. And then the other thing is just, uh, possibly a change in verbiage where it says, uh, this plan included addressing insufficiencies in the current town plan. Most of the stuff you were doing was updating either for, at least the way I looked at it, uh, s- stuff that wasn't in the plan because it wasn't required when the plan was approved.
Yeah, but that's an inefficiency.
But it's, well, it's an updating of the plan. I mean, an inefficiency seems to have that negative connotation.
Well, the one of the, you know, just sort of review, one of the things, the reason we sort of embarked on this kind of very difficult process was the select board asked, uh, the planning commission to address what, I mean, they called insufficiencies. So they were concerned about, um, they didn't even know about the village designation thing. I, we didn't know about it until kind of late.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, um, but one of the big ones was the, the fact that it didn't give us standing in Act two fifty.
Right.
Right, so that was kind of like.
But that came out after the plan was, uh, that was because of, if I remember what you said, was because of a court case that the way it got interpreted, a village, a town plan was where they used the word shall instead of should. Or not, I got the opposite, sorry, uh, should instead of shall. Um, and that case was, I'm gonna say, I'm trying to remember on what you said, uh, so I may be wrong. I'm thinking two or three years ago.
So the, the, there are a couple of cases that were really sort of foundational. Um, one of them is referred to as the J M Golf decision.
Mm-hmm.
And that one primarily relates to, um, the nature of how you write policies. So.
That one was, was written very generally.
Just i- i- in that one, if you have to boil it down, is about vagueness.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so you can't just sort of like say things without, you know, in very broad terms.
Right.
You can't like say, I'll give you an example. Uh, so I'll give you an example from our existing town plan. You can't say things like, and this is, well, this is more complicated because there are other reasons why you can't say this. But you can't say we don't want solar arrays. Right? That is so broad and it's so vague that they don't allow. But there's another reason why we can't do that. That did come up in, in some conversations around the town plan draft. Um, we're not allowed to say that because state law doesn't allow us to. If you want to have any say in solar, you have to have an enhanced energy plan. But let me give you another example. If you said, hmm, forests should be protected or, you know, we care about wildlife. It, like, what does that mean? Right? You can't actually use it when you're looking at project A versus project B, like two different site plans. Which one satisfies that? Who the heck knows? Cause like, you need very specific guidance. So that was, that was really what J M Golf was primarily about.
Right.
Um, they, they threw out the, the town, the, you know, I think it was South Burlington's, um.
And I mean, at the time, they thought they had a good plan and turned out court decided.
And I think, and I think that's what this insufficient.
I mean, all, all I'm looking at is verbiage. I'm just saying it was updating.
Steven.
Yes, sir.
Steven, J M Golf, um, predates the twenty eighteen plan. It was, so in fact, twenty eighteen plan was insufficient even at the time it was adopted. It's not that it became insufficient as a result of a subsequent court decision.
And, and I do wanna say, it's not, it's not like putting blame on anybody.
No, and I mean. Well, that's the reason I'm trying to avoid.
It wasn't your fault.
No, no.
Well, I, at the, at the time that plan was written, it was what the commission wanted.
That, that's probably true.
And right after that was adopted, they started changing the rules. And that's what that all boiled down.
I mean, yes, it just, it, the, the plan subsequently was inefficient, insufficient, sorry. Uh, but I'm just saying it was, it sounds nicer to say it was updating instead of it, it, in, in.
Yeah, okay.
Insuff- insufficient implies they didn't do a good job the first time around, which isn't really the case.
So we have another word. So I, I, I would think, I think it is important that we show that, you know, we're not just doing this for like fun, like we're trying to fix problems, you know, not, not to put any, not to blame, not to, but like to.
Well, updating, updating the plan to current requirements such that.
Well. Did you, you, you.
Ensuring the town has a state, say, in the state Act two fifty.
Answered it already.
You know, something along those lines.
But yeah, the original plan was uh, originally written and adopted prior to all this excess ruling that they've come out with since.
Well, the golf course was before, but that was only about, uh, I'm gonna call it vagueness, I believe. But then there were subsequent cases where plans got thrown out, if I remember your.
No, they really could date it, like, so the idea of this whole question of shall and should, that's been established for a long, long time.
Okay.
The newest case, and the one I think I mentioned in the last hearing, um, that was also pretty fundamental, now, it's now fundamental, is the, uh, Snowstone, I think it's called, it's the Cavendish case. And that's what set the size, the trigger for size of a development. So there was a question on whether a one acre town means one acre of like earth moving or one acre of parcel, you know, of any development on a one acre parcel. In that case, I went to the Vermont Supreme Court and they decide, they answered that question. It's any development on an acre or larger parcel. So, you know, it could be a small building, but if, if it's on an acre and, um, that was, that was fairly recent, so that would kind of.
Min- minimum, what do they call it? Minimum, uh, building block size of one acre.
Yeah, so we're a one acre town and, and that's because we don't have zoning. So that's like this sort of like give and take.
Right.
The state will give towns local control up to ten acres if you have zoning. But if you say, well, we don't want zoning, then they say, well, we're gonna now take control over anything bigger than an acre.
Right.
That's commercial.
But that's commercial, right?
Um, so would this make everybody feel better if we, instead of using the word insufficiencies, goals for this plan include addressing, or not, I was saying, goals for this. Goals for this plan include updating the town plan to address.
Shortcomings or address.
I was gonna say issues in the twenty eighteen town plan.
I mean, it should, uh, shortcomings almost sounds.
Worse, I know.
Might as well, but, yeah, no, you're right. It does sound worse. I take that.
Well, I have a, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I, to be clear, I don't, I don't think the current wording, uh, sounds like it's blaming anyone for a poor job, but uh, for, for those who might read it that way, what if we just said, uh, something like, uh, insufficiencies under current legal standards?
That might, that might work.
Under current standards, yeah.
Yeah, that might work.
Fine.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Did you have anything else?
Yeah, cause I face you what.
Great. No, I think, let's move on. I think we got it.
Yeah.
So would you have?
Anything else is fine, yeah.
Okay.
I know you're shocked and appalled.
What's that?
You're shocked and appalled.
Why?
That I didn't complain about anything else.
Oh, no, there's still time. Um, all right, so, so we go with this?
Forward to it.
Should we go with this? All right. And, and there's still a couple, well, I don't know how much we'll be like checking emails over the next couple of weeks, but, you know, if, if you, you all get a brainstorm about something that you really wanna put in here, I think we can be kind of flexible and put something in, but I, let's go ahead and, um, entertain a motion to approve this draft. Anybody wanna do that? With the change, right? With the change.
Sure. I'll propose that we accept this with the change.
Seconds?
I'll second that.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of, um, publishing the twenty twenty-three annual report with the change as discussed, please say aye.
My name.
Aye.
Okay, okay.
Any opposed? What did you say? Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't hear. Oh, that was everybody. No, no opposition. Okay, great. Thank you. Thought you were biting your tongue.
Mm-hmm.
All right, where do we leave off? Town plan status. I think we probably discussed most of that. I think, um, so I will, I will, I will let you know what I learned tomorrow in my discussion with the regional planning commission um, about the ti- you know, timing of their review. Um, I think we're in pretty good shape with them because they have been involved really from the get-go. And I think they basically gave us the kind of check, you know, thumbs up on it already. Now, that's the, the staff did. The plan itself is reviewed by commissioners, like representatives from the town, so they may have a different view. But, um, I, I, I feel pretty good that we're getting through.
Well, the staff usually has a pretty good feel of what the commissioners are looking for.
They actually will sit there and rec, you know, tell, tell the commissioners, we think this is good and they, they very rarely will go against the staff. Um, it, it has been known to happen, but. So where things get a little bit tricky in terms of the process is, uh, what happens, you know, if and when the select board wants, um, more significant changes to the draft. And that's where our timeline stretches out because, um, then we would need another public hearing.
On our end panel?
Well, the select board.
Okay, not on our.
Not on ours, thank goodness. No, but we would have to do, um, a write-up on what, what it means, what the significance is to the changes. So, you know, it's hard to say whether that'll happen or not. Um, it's possible. Um, that would mean if they make the deci- I don't know how it worked. So they would have to have the hearing and probably have another meeting to do a draft. And then thirty days from that would be another hearing.
We'll see how things work out.
Right, it'll just be what it'll be.
Hopefully, we, you know, contact the, uh,
And don't they?
About the village designation and make sure we get that six months after.
Yeah.
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 I mean, don't you, I think you said they need thirty days between, like to set the date for the hearing so they can post it, something like that. I'm going, I'm going on memory by what you were saying at one of the meetings.
Yeah.
So it's like, what is it, the sixteenth, I think is the public hearing.
Yeah.
If something comes up.
It'll be, it'll be another sixteenth.
Uh, minimal, I mean, oh, that's assuming there are changes and you had to turn it around. You'd have to turn it around right away.
Yeah, so.
And the earliest they could have next public meeting would be the sixteenth of February, give or take an inch.
No, it won't even be the sixteenth of February, would it? Cause you'd have to, they'd have to go to another select board hearing, no Saturday.
Well, it depends how quickly they can like edit.
They edit or us.
Yeah, what, what, what is the process? Because there's already been a very substantial set of comments provided to the select board.
Well, so the normal way it's done is, is the heavy editing is done early. Right? So that's the way it's supposed to work is that hearings sort of refine it. So the planning commission hearing is where that we're, you know, supposed to get the more substantial comments and, um, you know, well, ideally, the public involvement happens throughout the process, but, um, that's, you know, people are busy and don't always know. Um, I, I think it's unusual to have major changes come at a select board hearing. And I think in our case, that's probably very possible.
As I say, there's already been, Ted Crawford has submitted to the select board a lengthy set of comments.
Yeah, I can't see them having another public hearing to address more changes.
So if they want changes, it comes back to us and we have to correct it, correct or incorrect?
I think that would probably be, you know, a reasonable way to go. Um.
So then.
Well, they are the select board. I mean, they.
They can't tell us that's what we're gonna do.
It's the select board. So I don't think there's, so in other words, I don't think there's anything in statute that like tells them exactly how. Um, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, you can make an argument that it's like the more respectful way for fellow members of the town government to work, but you know, it doesn't always.
No, no, I just was thinking, cause if they send it, like if it got, had substantial changes needed, we, the planning commission made substantial changes, send it back to them, we'd be waiting on their next meeting to set another date, so you'd be actually talking marriage.
Unless you.
Well, it depends. We could have another.
If we step to burn, okay, our work on it, um, we might be able to get it, but.
Yeah, I mean, they could, they're, they would have to schedule a, a meeting for them to discuss it if they were gonna do the, so whoever is gonna actually do the changes, um, I, I think we're probably well positioned to do that because we understand what, why we did it and how we did it. Um, you would have to follow this, this hea- hearing.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be done at the hearing. It wouldn't be done at the hearing.
No, that's, that's, it would follow it and then they gotta set a date for another hearing, which was, means they have to have a meeting, so they could either have an emergency.
They could resolve at the hearing to ask or invite or, or tell the planning commission to make changes. And we could, I think we could meet probably, um, we could do a special meeting or we could do an emergency. I, I would prefer not to do an emergency meeting. But a special meeting only needs a two days' notice. You know, and we, you know, we could probably keep, um, I don't remember, what, what is our, our regular meeting is? Oh, I don't have the ca- calendar. What did we say the regular meeting was in January?
The seventeenth.
Yeah, seventeen.
So that's the day after.
This is literally the day after.
Uh, I think we can meet.
Yeah, so.
If there is a need, I should say.
But can the select board give a direction at the public hearing to the planning commission, saying?
Yeah.
It, but it doesn't have to be at a meeting of, of the select board. I'm not sure what the status of the public hearing is in terms of the select board making decisions at the public hearing and directing.
I, I think, I, I think, you know, I, we could probably verify this, but I'm pretty sure it's, it's the select board meeting. So it's just a very well-warned one that has special other privileges, right? So, you know, they could, they could adopt it there.
Right. If there's, you know, they, if there were minor changes, they could say, like a typo or something.
Minor change, yeah.
Yeah, they could say, you know, subject to the minor changes.
They could.
You're blessed, send it.
That's right. That's right.
And they could do it right there.
Yeah.
I guess we're getting too far into the weeds on the one.
We'll have to just see how it works.
Yeah. I was just thinking like worst case scenario, it needs, needed changes. It would come back to us, changes were made, the select board would have to meet again to set a date for another hearing and then they would have a month out from whenever they met, right?
Yeah, I think that's pretty reasonable.
Yeah, so I was just thinking like if it came back to us in January, it got fixed in January, it would be, there'd be, they have an emergency meeting or a special meeting, or it goes to the regular meeting, which could be in February, someone moves it out to March. If that's what they rated for.
Yeah.
Was the only thing I was trying to point out. I was, I didn't care, like, you know, who fixed it or whatever. Even if they fix it, they have to set a meeting for a month from whenever they.
Yeah, and it has to come to us either way, cause we have to write up what.
The changes and stuff.
And stuff, yeah. So, um, I, you know, I think we're just gonna have to roll with it and see how it goes. Um, just sort of preparing for the, the schedule to get tight, tight, you know, so.
Well, it was tight to begin with.
Yeah, so, um, that's really all I think I had on status. Uh, we all know when the meeting is. I think we've now figured out where it's gonna be held, it's gonna be here. Um, anything else on that? Andy, did you have anything? Andy Sholes, I mean?
No, I do, do not.
Okay.
Is, is this now, is this now your Texas look?
Well, I'm actually in a, uh, awkward position, cause, um, our son is visiting and he's working on job applications, so. I'm relegated to the bedroom for this meeting, which is why I look like I'm lying down.
Um, I guess the only final thing on, on that maybe is that, um, maybe if you have the opportunity to talk to Caitlin, so that at least they understand those dynamics, that might be good. Um, you know, kind of like understand the checklist and that sort of stuff. Um, so I'd rather never not be a surprise, like, oh, we need another hearing if we do that. If you follow me, I, you know, we're all on the same page. Yeah. That, that'd be possible. Okay, great. Anything else before we get out of here? Get out of here by eight would be nice. Anything else, Jim?
Nothing I can think of at the moment.
Okay, um, other comments? You don't have any? Unless you have any. No? Okay.
Good job, everyone. Happy year.
Right, thank you. So, do we need a meeting at the beginning of January or not?
Uh, probably not, not until we know what direction this is gonna go.
Yeah, I don't think we need it, anything for, they'll submit the report on time and, okay. So let's skip the meeting. No special meeting in January. Sound good? All right.
Now, are you still gonna have one on the seventeenth?
Should we do the one on the seventeenth?
That would be the standard regular meeting.
Right.
That would be great. I mean, I'm.
You can't make that one either?
No, I'm.
You can't make the hearing either?
No.
Oh, shoot. Okay.
I'm from the fourth to the point. I will if there's possibility, but we'll see.
All right, well.
We all know how that training goes and it's kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Been there, done that training.
All right, so we'll hold the regular. So we'll hold the regular meeting, um.
And I'll, um, because the town office is closed on Monday and Tuesday, I'll check with Caitlin and see where she's gonna be here, or maybe I'll just call her actually, just to discuss this sort of issue. Isn't that just?
No, be here tomorrow.
Sorry?
Be here tomorrow.
Yeah, I have a pretty busy work day.
Yeah, so.
Other work, yeah.
Whatever you can, yeah, manage.
I think it would be easier actually for just me to call.
Yeah. All right, anything else? We'll, we'll hold our regular meeting on the seventeenth as usual, um.
Unless otherwise notified.
Yeah, unless, unless we find out something that, that we don't need it or whatever. Um, okay. Any other business? Hearing. Is it yes?
No, after I gotta talk to.
Uh, hearing done, meeting is adjourned at.
Seven fifty seven.
Seven fifty seven.